All right, six oh three, I'm gonna call the special meeting of board selectmen to order. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance. So I've been or no, would you like?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the board of selectmen are here in present. Our first item of business is to go into executive session will involve just the five of us. May I have a motion?
Move that we go into executive session at six oh four P M.
In there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? We are in executive session at six oh four. All right, I want to call the meeting of the board of selectmen back to order. Our next item of business is the approval of meeting minutes from October eleventh, twenty twenty three.
Make a motion to reject the meeting minutes of Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty three as resulted.
There a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, are there any corrections?
Um, yes, I do have one on page five, um, B. It says, um, first selectman Bowser reported that Chief Carl of the police department has selected a candidate for the position of deputy chief. Um, it was the selection committee that selected the candidate. It was just the chief that announced it, so I'd like to make that correction.
Yep, so noted. Are there any other corrections? Motion would be in order to to accept the minutes as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? So, okay. Uh, October nineteenth.
Move to approve the October nineteenth, twenty twenty three Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes.
There a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion or corrections?
Yes, page six. It's heavy, but nonetheless, I think it should be changed under same new appointments. First look involved in notice two applicants that have applied for membership. It's not membership. Membership required they do, um, apply for the position on our building committee.
Okay.
If you don't mind saying you're not paid.
Are there any other corrections? All in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carry. Uh, the special meeting from Wednesday, October twenty fifth.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen special meeting minutes from October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three.
Motion has been made in seconded, are there any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carry it. Public participation. This is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. Um, I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and then provide the same opportunity to anybody who's online. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Sorry, Charlie, I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you. Good. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Keep that luck, one twenty five People's Street. I noticed on your agenda today, you have an item ninety. And I just wanna make some comment about ninety. So I want to draw your attention to the charter. The charter is section four dash one, says the composition of the board of selectmen, first selectmen, the deputy select, deputy first selectmen, and the other three selectmen. And I want to point out that section four dash eight talks about compensation for the, um, the members of the board of selectmen, its employees and employee personnel shall receive such compensations as may be determined, uh, by the budget submitted to and adopted uh, as a result of the annual budget. So compensation for anybody on the board of selectmen needs to go through the budget process through the public hearings, budget approval, and so the board of board of selectmen does not have authority to override the statute. I know when the path did happen, um, I wasn't aware of it at the time, I didn't say anything about it. But I I just, uh, I was wondering tonight, well, I'm not asking for a question, but if you're gonna act on, um, ninety, you need to be aware if you're not of the charter that requires that it goes to the annual budget, the the public hearing process and approval. And that hasn't happened for any change in compensation for anyone on the course law.
Thanks. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Uh, James Barton, one oh eight Main Street and, uh, where I was playing. I just like to thank, um, so I'm in order for the, the job he's done past four, five, six years, whatever. Um, he's been an asset to the board and, uh, just wanted to thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other, uh, public comment? Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
Northern Farmhouse, forty seven South Water Street. Um, congratulations to all of you who were reelected. It makes me feel very hopeful for our continuing movement forward for our community. And, um, Charlie, thank you so much for everything you have done. You've been a wonderful asset. You've accomplished many things that you could be proud of. And we will be missed. But I'm sure that we'll bring you back in for some other time now that you have more time, but, um, be proud of everything you've done. You deserve much appreciation for all of it.
Are there any other public comments? Do you know, is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? Okay, we'll move on to recognition of selectmen Charlie Nordell. Oh, yeah, I did. We, we did recently appoint our new deputy chief police Ben Murphy, who's here with us tonight. Deputy Chief, welcome. Um, he included a very kind thank you note, um, to the board and to the process. And I just wanted to share that for the record and say how gracious I thought that was. So he's off to a great start. Um, the feedback that I received from, uh, the officers in the department I shared with Chief Carl as well has been fantastic. Um, and I would just share if I, if I may, a quick anecdote. Um, last Friday morning, Veterans Day at six A M., um, both the chief and the deputy chief were at the police department making breakfast for the officers that were changing shifts, something that has not happened, I believe, ever. And is not, if that's not a representation of the, the service that these men intend to provide to that department and to their members, I don't know, I don't know what it's. So gentlemen, we are elated to have, thank you. Now, recognition of selectmen Charlie Nordell, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the prerogative to start, but I'll invite the other members of the board too as well. I do want to take a moment to recognize the service of Charlie Nordell as a member of the Board of Selectmen over the last four years, Chief Barton. Um, in, in participatory government, particularly at the local level, where important roles are almost entirely populated by volunteers. The highest hope that we can have of those who will make decisions for us is that they will make those decisions with the very best of intentions at heart. Charlie Nordell has done. He is a man who has been here for all of the right reasons, putting community first, offering common sense approaches and solutions to complicated community issues. He stood by his values, he's been a quiet leader and sometimes a forceful leader. But his, his leadership has been rooted in, in his morals and his values. He has been fair. He has been considerate. He has served with honor and distinction. His communication, his contributions to the town are many. They are meaningful and they will be long lasting. Charlie, I am truly grateful to have had the opportunity to serve with you sincerely. However you next choose to serve our town, I am confident that you will. You will be successful and you will have my support. Thank you for your service and thank you for your friendship. Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I was gonna include this in my select report, but I'll bring it up now. I just wanted to, I'll echo those comments, but I wanted to say that, you know, I didn't know Charlie, I didn't know you. When we first got on the board together, you know, we were all, you know, on opposing parties and everything, didn't know anything about you. But I found you to be a person of honesty and, uh, integrity and never afraid to give your opinion. And, you know, we debated a couple of times here and there, it was always respectful and never, um, I never felt like, um, it was gonna be anything other than that. I felt like we could be open and honest with each other, so I really do appreciate your service and consider you a friend now and, and, uh, good luck in the future. Thank you.
Thanks.
I was gonna send that in my select report as well, but, um, it's been an honor to serve with you. And I know you've made many sacrifices over the years with family time and and put in a lot of hours here and, um, you will be missed on this board and appreciate all that you've done for the community. Thank you.
Oh, Charlie. I didn't know you at all. Um, and so you were lucky to the board. Um, and then with any new boards, um, that you sit on, you always worry about where you're gonna be sitting next to them. Um, I have been honored to sit beside you, um, in this current board, the way, way we work together. Um, we made commitments when we both ran on various parties, saying that we were looking to unite on the board of selectmen and the community together. Um, you certainly have been a major role in doing that. So for that, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for always being one of the people in my, whether you agreed with what I had to say or not, what I had to say. And we were able to come to coffee, my, you are the epitome, you are somebody sitting on your store or should be, I mean, you're a good role model moving forward for anyone that wants to sit here. So Kudos, uh, wishing the best of luck. Um, enjoy your free time and when you get bored of your free time, let us know, we'll be something to do.
Thank you. So with that, I have a small token of our appreciation. Town of East Windsor recognizes Charles Nordell for your commitment, leadership, and unselfish dedication to the Board of Selectmen and the Town of East Windsor. We thank you for your four years of service. Your efforts, energy, and passion will always be with us. You have truly made a difference. Given on behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen, the Town of East Windsor, the sixteenth day of November, twenty twenty three. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks to everyone who's supported you over the years. Um, it, it hasn't been easy. Um, when five years ago, when I used to sit in the audience like you painfully, um, it's tough getting through these meetings. They're, they're not fun, they're not enjoyable, they're not interesting. Um, but it was, I, I felt like I had to, I had to make a change in East Windsor. And, um, I decided to run for the board, um, was elected and it's been an honor ever since. Um, a lot of the things I wanted to see done and get accomplished were done. Um, there's still a few more, but I have faith in this group to, uh, to, uh, see those through. And, um, again, thanks to everyone that, that has supported. Especially to my family who's put up with the last four years of not seeing me, so. Thank you, everyone.
Um, we are on to reappointments. We have one, Rick Webster as a member of, a regular member of the Veterans Commission for a term expiring December first, twenty twenty seven. Is there a motion?
I'll move to reappoint Rick Webster as a regular member of the Veterans Commission for a term expiring December first, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion?
Um, I'm glad that he wants to continue to serve. He takes a big role in the veterans road race, um, in November every year, so glad to see him continuing.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? New appointments, selectmen Sarah Muska as the, uh, member of Youth Services Advisory Board for a regular member term expiring November first, twenty twenty six. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Sarah Muska to the Youth Service Advisory Board as a regular member for a term expiring on November first, twenty twenty six.
Motion has been made in seconded. Uh, any discussion? I will just say thank you for your leadership on this. I know this is a personal issue and, and you're gonna do a great job.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carry.
Thank you.
Um, discussion and possible action on the settlement and release agreement between the town and John Watts doing businesses Watts Law Firm. Uh, this is a legal issue that has vexed the town since before any of us have acted. Um, so this has been an issue that has, um, been in front of the town for, uh, longer than any of us have been seated here. Um, actually, it might go back to your first tenure, which is ten years ago.
Thousand eleven.
Yeah. Um, so, but this, uh, what we have is a, um, settlement and a release agreement that will permanently put this issue to bed. Um, so I'd ask for a motion.
Move to authorize the settlement and release agreement between the Town of East Windsor and John Watts, D B A Watts Law Firm.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carry.
Also move to authorize the signature of the first selectmen on this said agreement, settlement and release agreement between the town and John Watts, Watts Law Firm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Or? Okay, we're on to discussion, uh, discussion and acceptance of a letter of intent from Cheryl French pertaining South Road Convenance forwarding that, uh, letter of intent to a town meeting. This is the, I believe, fourteenth of fifteen. Is there a motion?
Make the motion that we accept the surface letter of intent from Cheryl A French containing to the South Road Convenance and for a following.
Uh, great signature.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have one more line. Well, I don't think we've ever heard of, ever. Um, including, I think, sending somebody else that I have to call. Uh, but we're very close, well, after the company tonight, we'll be very close somewhere. Um, so next we had a constituent, uh, well, not a constituent, but a property owner named Lorraine Ross, um, who is interested in acquiring a piece of town owned property adjacent to her home on Morris Road. This is, all we need to do with this is an eight twenty four referral. And then it'll come back here. Um, but this is keeping in, in the spirit of us trying to, um, dispose of town, small pieces of town owned property that we don't have any use for and we're carrying liability on. That's, that's one. So it's a small piece that's on the corner of Windserville and Morris Road. Windserville, Wobbin and Morris Road. We actually had some tree damage done here. I think for weeks of thoughts. So if you guys are interested in potentially disposing of the property, motion would be to form the recommendation to planning and zoning commission for an eight point four referral and then, as I said, we'll come back.
I think it's a great idea. Perfect for, for her, which I'm great, so. I don't have any problem with.
I would make.
I'm all concerned, um, in reading documentation that was sent to the by morning. Um, it looks like she wants trees taken down, if I'm reading it correctly. Um, and I'm just wondering which one came first, taking the property or this one wanting to treat it down? And if we give her the property, do we not have to worry about this or do we have to worry about this, then do this? It's not clear to me.
No, there's, the way I read it is, yeah, this is a kind of cleaned up the trees that had fallen on her garage. I don't know if you didn't buy there when it happened, it was a number of years ago.
This is what you, she's putting us on notice in writing that there may be potential issue with future she has to remove the trees, so, oh.
She was on notice of her. Some time ago. So anyway, I think she'd rather just own the property. Right.
I just don't want to worry, you know, I know this much, whether we come back and everybody, right, we go, they're in the knowledge. Um, I'm present.
Okay.
Hi.
We haven't met before.
Um, I did speak with you.
Yes, I, but I, I didn't put a face to the name on.
Yeah, I, I am interested. At first I wanted the tree taken care of, but then I figured, you know, it's in there, it's not being used. I used to take care of it and then I've, I don't live there, my son lives there now. And when they did come into all the trees, they did make a mess, there's a lot of there. Um, there's a continuous problem with vines growing up on the trees and that is causing a problem. And now that I just recently repaired the garage, I don't want that to happen again. When I spoke with you, you said that we, I might, because I asked you if I could buy the property, you said, but we could probably work something out, so.
That's what we're doing here.
Yeah, I would take care of the property once it's given to me.
That's like it is.
Make motion to make an eight twenty four referral for vacant property in Morris Road Lot zero one seven dash six seven dash zero zero nine, uh, eight to the planning zone.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There it is. Um, okay, so we're on, thank you very much. Uh, we're on to the memo from the town treasurer pertaining to, uh, a transfer of funds, but we see it on allocated for two outstanding projects. Um, the first is, uh, to cover the, the deficit and the property evaluation that is ongoing, treasurer's recommended for ten thousand dollars from C I P unallocated to the assessment or evaluation line, which includes the numbers in her, uh, in her memorandum. Um, and the second pertaining, pertaining to a drainage project at East Windsor Park, um, that, uh, I'm gonna let Joe speak to if he feel need.
Anything?
Hi.
Charlie, I'm gonna miss you, cause you're the only one that ever asked me questions.
Well, I'm sure you're gonna.
Now you're gonna get an old lunchtime.
Uh, forgotten about the paving budget. Okay, so obviously you're all well aware of the playground, which is like all the concrete's poured around it now. Take about a couple of weeks for the concrete to cure up and then we're gonna be putting a rubber base on. If you do have time, anybody, if you have time, take a ride up there. It is unbelievable, it, it, you know. To me, it looks like something we used to go to and play on in Six Flags. Or actually, it was Riverside. But anyway, so as we were installing that, we with the design, we put a curtain drain underneath it to absorb the water so the concrete doesn't crack and everything. And in further investigation, as we're working up there, it's very, very wet. If you've ever been up to the top end of the park, especially with, but all the houses behind Skinner Road and Skinner Road is higher, everything runs down into the park, sits down until it either saturates in the grass or on heavy rains, it just it's like sheet flow right across. So what, what, what I'm proposing to do is while we're up there, is to turn around and with the drainage we installed, which runs everything into all the catch basins, goes into a wa- water quality unit to take all that groundwater, put it through the water quality unit, then it'll go into the, the pipes, cross the road and then goes down into the brook. It doesn't even go into the, the pond, the swimming area goes down into the brook. But it'll all go through that water quality unit. So while we're there now, dug up, the park looks like a bomb went off in it because we've got topsoil, you know, everything's all grass. I'd like to end, it, it will help us in the spring and the summer to mow because we can't even, all spring and summer long, we can't even get up there, it's fall before we can mow, so the grass gets high. I want to run a curtain drain all along the edge of the hill and then just do a ninety and come down. We've had a couple of houses on reservoir. They, they actually have, they literally dug moats around their houses because of all the sheet flow that comes across. So we're gonna leave this drain up to the top with stone and we're gonna try to pick up about ninety, we're hoping to pick up about ninety percent of the water, but reality is about seventy five. So we're there now. Um, it, it's the perfect time to do it. Come on, Charlie, you gotta come up with something, your last meeting.
So, yeah, I do, I, okay. So, so what does this entail? You guys are gonna install another?
Nope, it's.
Is this gonna be something you're gonna see or is this gonna be under the grass?
So it's, we're gonna put a catch basin by the, the top hill where the hill comes down. And we're gonna go all the way across with a curtain drain, so it's, it's stone, it's, it's cloth, you dig it out, you put cloth in there.
Right.
Stone, then a perforated, like ten inch pipe. And then more stone on top and fold the cloth over. And then normally you would put topsoil on the top. But what I want to do is leave the stone right to the top.
Okay.
That way there it'll catch everything.
Yeah.
And then it'll come around and it'll come all the way towards reservoir, almost directly behind the shed that's up there next to the playground.
Right.
We'll put another catch basin there to make a ninety. And then be able, then we'll come straight down and tie into all our new drainage. Now, the advantage of putting the catch basin in is number one, if we continue to have some problems with the neighbors on reservoir, we can always come out of that catch basin and just go right towards reservoir where we have our right of way and try to pick up the water. The other side, we can come down the hill all along the property line, right from the ban shell. And, and then the soccer fields, the soccer fields on the other side is always wet. Those all year round, we can always go there and, you know, it'll, it'll put the basin for us to do more under drains or curtain drains.
So we're not this, we're not the Aylund Wetlands or playing and zoning, we're, we're finding.
Are we supposed to sliding and zoning? We're not in the Upland Review. It's an extent, it's just an extension of the drainage, which they're all for because their issue is, is the sh- the water sheathing from the hill, across the parking lot and then down the hill. And, you know, and, and of course, with all the extreme rain we've had, it's been ridiculous, I mean, it, it's the water that comes along the stock gate fence, it's like a river. And then it goes, it goes behind the snap bar between, between the splash pad and the tree line there and then sits. Well, and that's in the Upland Review. We did a little bit of work there with permission of planning and zoning. And now the water will go all the way to the drain where it's supposed to and then, and then it discharges down in the brook.
Yeah, my point was we're not moving what you're doing really, that would be
The money.
Funding, and we're not even really forwarding that available to.
So this, this according to the, uh, uh, Board of Selectmen has control over transferring of these funds out of our C N R, C N R unallocated is the Board of Selectmen's penalty.
Okay.
Just like any other department has a C N R line, that they can move their money around product specifically, that's what we.
Does Board of Finance also need to, well, just us on this one?
That's, that's what she said.
Interesting. Okay.
I just have a question on the stone, pay your money, I'm leaving there. Isn't that going to be an issue with the kids?
It'll be.
It's piece stone?
It will, it won't be piece stone, it's, it's, we'll use three quarters, small stone, small crushed stone. And no, that I.
It'll eventually pack, so.
It'll pack and then honestly, eventually the grass will grow over it.
Okay.
So like Tromley Road, as you go around the corner on Tromley Road.
Yeah.
We did the same thing on Norton Road. And now you can't even see the stone on Norton Road, Tromley Road, another year or two, everything grows in, but putting the topsoil, that just slows our drainage down. And I'm looking to try to pick all that water up that's on the top of, coming down the hill.
Other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, approve the transfer of ten thousand dollars from the unallocated C I P three zero zero five four one one dash five seven three nine zero zero to the assessors rebound. Three zero zero five four one three one dash five seven six zero zero five. Also, to make a transfer of thirty thousand dollars from, like, unallocated C I P same account to the P and R drainage, three zero zero five four five zero three dash five seven four zero zero three. to the P and R drainage, three zero zero five four five zero three dash five seven four zero zero three.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yeah, that was my last.
I agree, so then I'm gonna take over the chair and I've asked Jason to leave the room. So this affects him. We're on new business, number E, discussion and possible action on performance of first selectmen.
So as you guys know, tonight we reviewed the first selectmen and I have a motion to make. I would make a motion that in lieu of our performance review, the first selectmen's last forty years, we'd like to give a merit increase of three and a half percent. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
As far as the earlier public participation comment made earlier, that is in the charter. We make salary adjustments all the time, every board does, I mean, every board of selectmen does. So just like tonight, we have to, we can move things around, we can make adjustments when we've done midterm for, I don't know how many. And so is every other board. Word at eight.
It's very short, it's very vague, and I'll read it because it is so short. Members of the board of selectmen, its employees and appointed personnel shall receive such compensation as may be determined by the budgets submitted to the to and adopted as a result of the approved annual town budget. So that can be interpreted, as far as I'm concerned, a number of different ways, if the money's available, which it is.
And, and there has been budget increases for that position to the budget process, this is the new decision to.
Not appropriate money that's already in the budget.
Right.
Right.
Or motion been made and seconded, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
There, everyone outside.
I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to Jake and others, especially to the room. He's in the room.
We are on tax terms.
A move to approve the tax refunds totaling eight thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The rental places?
Well, these are all lease vehicles.
I don't think they're it. Okay, selectmen's reports. I want to offer a heartfelt thank you to the voters of East Windsor for their trust and confidence in me to serve another four years as first selectman, I am truly grateful. I want to also offer my congratulations to everyone who was elected on November seventh, Democrat and Republican. I hope you find the opportunity to serve the town to be fruitful and rewarding, and I'm happy to offer any help I can, anyone, as you assume or continue your goals. All newly elected office holders will be sworn in at the ceremony to be held on November twenty-first at six P M. right here. Swearing in will be performed by Lieutenant Governor Susan Bice. To everyone who ran for office but wasn't successful, thank you for your willingness to put your name on the ballot and to not volunteer at times. Everyone has something to offer and there is a place for anyone to serve who wants to. I want to take a moment to recognize, as I said, the service of Charlie Nordell, thank you very much, Charlie, you've been an important part of our team and you're gonna be missed. As we look to the future, I also want to share that we had the official bid opening on the community center project today. We received nine bids, eight of which were below our project funding approval amount, which means we have eight qualified bids. We'll now be working with USDA through their bid award process and bid submissions and USDA recommendations will be forwarded to the building, funding the building. For anyone interested, the low bidder on the project was three point six five million dollars. Highest qualified bid was four point five billion dollars, so the approval was for four point seven two and we have eight to choose from below that.
Wow.
Which is great, it's very exciting and that means the project is full steam. Great.
The only meeting I attended since our last meeting was the police mission meetings and they just gave people over their financials, so I don't have anything really there to discuss. I've already dated on good luck to Charlie, so I won't get into that. But what I'd like to do is put out a appeal to everyone that's in this room today, you know, the holiday seasons are coming. And if you've been on Facebook, you've seen that the Melissa Maltese and her group are looking to sponsor, as they do every year, the children. And at last call, they do about fifteen sponsorship short, so if anybody has it and their ability to do something, I know somebody that might be interested, reach out to Melissa Maltese, they get one of those children so they can have a good Christmas.
All right.
November sixth, I attended the Wells Point Fire Department meeting. Department responded to fifty-six incidents during the month of October and the fire marshal was absent, so we didn't get reports or inspections from him. And on November fifteenth, last night, I attended board of finance meeting. Unfortunately, Geraldine wasn't there for us to all say goodbye to her for her last meeting. But her service will also be missed. And tax collections are, were announced to be on track for the year. Board of Education was also stating the same. And Dr. Tudorin had some, a few announcements that twenty plus of the veterans participated, local veterans participated in schools here across town on Veterans Day for different activities and assemblies throughout. And he says they've always done a great Veterans Day program here and always encouraged learning on veterans and what it is they've done in their service for the town and for the country as a whole. And he also stated that over twenty middle school students participated in this year's Veterans Day Road Race, which is pretty amazing, pretty good. And lastly, I want to say again, thanks everyone for supporting me over the years. Um. I will miss sitting here with all of you, it's been a pleasure and good luck to you all and I'm probably not going away, but I'm certainly gonna be a little less busy, that's for sure. That's it.
Okay. Monday night, I went to the Broadway Fire Department Commissioners meeting. They have, they've had seven hundred and twenty calls so far this year, it's about eighty a month. It was two fires, two house fires, I think in this month alone. So they've been pretty busy, pretty steady throughout the year. They did spend some time correcting minutes, there was a discrepancy in the September minutes about the, what we'll hear about later on tonight, about the sea graves. So the cost of that went up a little bit, they were able to negotiate it back down a little, but we'll be talking about proving that tonight. And they're in the early stages of their feasibility study, so we'll be hearing more about that over the next year or so, I guess. Tuesday night, I went to the planning and zoning meeting. Probably the most important thing that they did there that night was they approved the new section five oh seven to the Warehouse Point Design District. Which was the result of the Warehouse Point Study, numerous things that went on over the last four or five years. I think it looks pretty good, it was, they held it open for two meetings on this last go around for public input, there wasn't really any input and you know over the last four or five years, they had a number of public meetings, or listen, did get input in the beginning on how people wanted it and that was all incorporated into the final document, so it looks pretty good. That's done. We had a public hearing for the project on seventy-four Craftsman, I mean seventy-four Newbury and Nine Craftsman, which I think I've talked about. But that was continued to the next month, so the, or the next meeting, they'll be taking that up. And also there was a cell tower, I think this has been around, people are hearing about it, but there's a cell tower being proposed next to the existing cell tower that's attached to the water tower on Chandler Road, that's in front of the sighting council. And the P O C D timeline was discussed, they didn't set any times, but they're they're starting that process, so that'll go on for the next, you know, year or so. So we'll need to be watching that. And then I did stop by the board of finance last night to mainly to say goodbye and, and thanks to Geraldine that she was there though, so I'll have to catch up with her. But she did, I don't know, it was ten or twelve years of board of finance and I think she did an excellent job. And I do appreciate that. And lastly, I'd like to thank the voters of East Windsor for reelecting me, looking forward to seeing through some of the projects that we got going and finishing them up in the next two years. That's it. Sir.
Okay, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on Monday night was canceled. I attended the Arts and Culture Committee meeting on Tuesday evening. The committee painted a selfie board for last Saturday's Veterans Road Race. There was discussion of possibly adding a QR code or a little sign so photographers can tag the Arts and Culture Facebook page when they post their photos going forward. There are hopes to collaborate again with the Veterans Commission on future projects. The committee is collecting plastic bottle caps of all sizes for a future project. There are collection boxes in the hallway right out here by the bench, the town hall annex and all three schools for those who wish to donate. Upcoming projects include creating a birdhouse, which they're getting a donation from Home Depot of the wooden birdhouses, which is great for people to decorate and they might have a contest for that. Open mic night, artist demos and Archthen Culture Day, which will be May eighteenth of twenty twenty-four, more info is to follow. This group continues to have positive energy and motivation, so there sure is gonna be good things to come from them in the next year. Thank you to the board for appointing me to the Youth Services Advisory Board this evening. I am honored to serve in this role and I look forward to working with many community stakeholders to ensure that there are resources and programs available to youth within our community. Thank you to Police Chief Matt Carl for his countless hours of work to keep us functioning and to Community Services Director Melissa Maltese for all that she does for families and children within our community. I would like to thank two dedicated public servants for their service to the town of East Windsor, both whom I have had the privilege to serve with. Geraldine Corso, Chairman of the Board of Finance and Selectman Charlie Nordell. Geraldine has served on boards and commissions for over a decade and Selectman Nordell has been active and active and incredible asset to this board over the last four years. Thank you both for the sacrifices that you've made to serve our community. Taking time away from your families and putting other things to the side so you could attend meetings and events. Your countless hours of volunteerism have been appreciated and you both will be missed. It's been an honor serving with this board over the last four years and I'm proud of the accomplishments we've made together. And a sincere thank you to the voters for the opportunity for myself to serve another two years. The East Windsor Police Union stuff a cruiser toy drive will be at Walmart on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, from eight AM to four PM. Members of the Police Department and Social Services staff will be collecting new unwrapped toys to benefit East Windsor families this holiday season. And then just on a personal note, in honor of our military, many of whom will not be home for the holidays. I will be rucking, which is walking with a weighted pack on Thanksgiving at midnight. Thirty-one miles from East Granby to Manchester to benefit the Fisher House Foundation. I will actually be rucking in honor of East Windsor's own Nick Mexada, who served in the Iraq War from two thousand and five into two thousand and six. I'm a member of a fourteen person team and thank you to those who have supported me and this incredible charity. It's truly amazing to be a part of something bigger than yourself and to give back to those who have given so much to us. And I'm wishing you all a safe, happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Are you rucking thirty-one miles or are you, or are you as a team rucking?
No, we each are doing thirty-one miles, yes.
Public participation, this is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the board. I will first turn to anybody who's in the room and then I will provide anybody online the same opportunity. If you'd like to speak, please identify yourself by name and address and state your, state your business. Yes, sir.
Keith gang law from Depot Street. Tonight you approved money to put a curtain drain at the at the reservoir park. Might I suggest that you should get an engineering study before you spend more money putting in a curtain drain? I don't know if you recall, we took out several hundred mature trees in exactly the area of flooding, the area behind Skinner Road and the area down Reservoir Road. There was no engineering study to determine the impact of picking out hundreds of mature trees. Exactly the area you're getting flooding and so now you're replacing the, all the water that was absorbed by those trees without flooding the park. So instead of just paying for a curtain drain, maybe we should get an engineering study, you have an eight hundred thousand dollar playground in there. You have a five hundred thousand dollar splash pad, there's a lot of infrastructure to protect and it should be done properly before you start digging up the areas, especially around those neighbors on Skinner Road and Reservoir Road to try to do some kind of short term solution. Let's get it done properly within the engineering system.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir, anyone address please?
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadwater. East Windsor Housing Authority is going to have an open to the public meeting, five o'clock, November twenty-ninth. At Park Hill. On, I don't know, a meeting. Freedom of information, information and anything else that people want to bring up. That's wide open to anyone who wishes to attend. Five o'clock, November twenty-ninth.
Other public comment? Other public comment? Or anyone online who would like to address the members of the board? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
When do we adjourn at seven twenty-three?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven twenty-three.